It is Thursday, August the 19th. It is 2:04 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the free and fairty and justice for all. For those of you in attendance and online, this is a hybrid meeting, which means that we do have council members who are in chambers and council members who are online. Having taken a look at who is in chambers, we have Councilmember Glover, Councilmember Howard, Councilmember Lawson, and Councilmember Somerville are in chambers. Online are Councilmembers Cunningham, Hervishan, McKellen, and myself. Councilmember Stu Rodman had a prior commitment, therefore he is absent. We do have a sufficient number of council members present to conduct business. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Will a member of council please recommend that we approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, but Councilman Lawson is not here.
He is, yes, sir.
Is he? Oh, is he coming? Okay.
He's standing right here, sorry.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's duly motioned and seconded. Are there any objections to the approval of the agenda as stated?
Mr. Chairman, I think we're also missing Mr. Dawson.
Yes, we are missing Mr. Dawson. I do not see him. Thank you. I missed him, okay? He may be coming online, but we still have enough members present. Thank you for that. The agenda is approved without objections. We're at the Citizen Comments. Is there anybody in chambers or online who has indicated they wish to make a comment?
No, sir, there isn't.
Okay, we will close the Citizen Comments section. We are now at the Discussion and Action Items. Earlier today, you received an email from Sarah with additional documentation that will be used as part of this meeting. I hope you have that. We are going to be discussing the Facility Master Plan from Creations Associates. I'm going to ask our County Administrator to introduce Creations Associates. So, Mr. Greenway, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, council members. This afternoon, you're going to receive a lot of data and a lot of information. We do not expect you all to absorb all of this today. It's going to be a fairly long workshop. There's been a lot of things that you all have asked us to do. Staff has been busily completing those things. One of the major things that was in process before I came interim and County Administrator was the study that was being carried out by Creations Associates. We have Brent and Brooke with us today from Creations Associates. They're going to review the results of that study. It's been a very massive undertaking for us to do this along with them. Jared Frayleks and Mark Rosenau have done an outstanding job working with them and giving them guidance and direction. So I'm going to turn it over to Brent now, and he's going to walk you through this as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And then we will move on to the other items after they finish up and answer any questions for you. This is your workshop, so feel free to ask questions and interrupt as needed. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you to share the results of the study. I'm going to ask your forgiveness in advance as we cram so much data and eight months' worth of study into an hour's worth of material for you today. I reiterate what Eric just said. Please feel free to ask us questions as you go.
There you go.
Okay, it is. Very well. Sorry, as we resolve our technology. Okay, I'll start again. My name is Brent Green. I'm with Creations Associates. Excited to be here to share with you this afternoon. With me today is Brooke Martin, who is with Dewberry. Our two firms team together to combine our expertise to bring you all the absolute best set of resources to resolve the project. You can see those other folks. That was obviously a lot bigger undertaking than just the two of us could handle on our own, so we look forward to introducing these members who are our team to you hopefully later in time. So our agenda for today is really about rushing to get to the conceptual design. I'm going to start off with about a five-minute intro of the front end that led through our space needs analysis, the scope of the project. But we really want to spend the bulk of our time today discussing the conceptual designs to get your feedback on those items. So again, we started in July of last year and looking at truly a countywide assessment, 53 departments spread across 52 buildings. We have five county locations there. That's just terms of jurisdiction. Obviously, we were sort of across the entire footprint. And we really enjoy getting to know your area, your staff, the operations that you have. And again, it was a pretty broad undertaking that we have really broken down into categories that we can share with you the results of today. This is a list of those 53 departments. Again, it ranges from everything, the full justice system, the library, all the administrative functions, and pretty much every arm of county services. This is the facility list, and again, it's the 53 and 52 buildings spread out across the county. The total of that square footage is somewhere around 660,000, so a huge inventory of the county's facilities. So in terms of our process, it really is one that happens with lateral functions in the beginning in that we are studying simultaneously your facilities, how your area is growing. We are interviewing your staff to understand their needs, and all of those things converge in what we're going to predominantly share with you today, which is the results of those conceptual designs. And after we've worked through that process, of course, we develop some budgets for capital planning and then work towards our final report. Part of that, as I mentioned, was doing staff interviews. It's a key component of this. And again, I think we interviewed someone from all 53 departments. There were 70-plus hours' worth of interviews conducted to make sure that we had a comprehensive understanding of those needs. And it wouldn't be surprising to you that most of those had some need or deficiency in space that would require some additional resources. So forecasting, I could spend a bunch of time on this, but what I'll tell you is effectively we use data sets from the previous 10 years to help us understand a projection for the next 20 or 30. In this study, we were asked to look at a 30-year horizon. We use all these data sets from the U.S. Census, from the county. You all had a study done by Titchler-Bikes recently, so we combined all of those metrics to understand how to adequately plan for growth. As you all well know, when we plan a civic building, it is never for today. Civic buildings have an extended life well beyond even 20 years most often. So this slide is a summary of growth by department. So it takes all 53 of those departments and lists them out in terms of the 2020 number and then in five-year increments throughout the 30-year projection. So you can see as a summary at the top there, effectively that yielded 32 per year. That sounds like a big number, but that's spread across all of the different services. And again, over the span of 30 years, that was a 1.7 annual growth for 60%. Okay, so that was what the metrics from our forecast yielded in terms of the overall number for the study.
When you did growth assessment, did you take in consideration technology changes?
We did.
Okay.
And we also asked some questions about COVID that we will share at the end as well, just in terms of looking forward to how other workplaces could be implicated by that. But we did definitely talk about remote work and telework and all of those components. I assume that's what you mean by technology?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And more.
Yes. So we went through a space needs analysis. And again, it's a slide with a bunch of numbers on it. I want to try and summarize it for you. So each of those departments yielded a set of needs. And once we met with their staff and understood how many people they were, what their support spaces were like, what they have today, what they will need in the future, we've broken that down into these categories. And current existing is the footprint that they occupy today. That's that column on the left. Current proposed is what those same departments would occupy based on our model for today. In other words, that would make up for any of the deficiencies that they had in space needs for today. And that future proposed column adds that 30-year horizon that we talked about relative to how the population and staff resources will grow in parallel. So you say have current existing, what we have today. Current proposed, what those same functions should have today. And future proposed, how we plan for the future. And not surprising, it ends up somewhere around double when you look at a true 30-year horizon. What that says again, remember we talked on the other slide, you're in around 662,000 square feet. And to plan for today's needs and 30 years out, our study yielded 1.19 million gross square feet. So again, it's not quite double, but it's in that order of magnitude. All right. So again, a lot of big numbers, and of course, not all of these things happen at one time. So we want to talk about this in terms of some smaller pieces as we break this down, sort of by location for you in the master plan study. A lot of information on this slide. Any questions before we...
Could you elaborate a little bit on what current proposed means and future proposed means?
Certainly. So when we undertake a space needs study, the first question you're always asked is, well, what do they have now? Okay, so that is the column on the left. Current proposed is taking those same departments and staff workloads and support spaces and putting them in our model, which says these are the size these spaces should be. In other words, based on current and national planning and metric standards. So it sort of accounts for the deficiencies that you have in the space that you should have today. I hope that answers the question.
It answers everything except future proposed.
I'm sorry?
It answers everything except future proposed.
So what I just mentioned in terms of current proposed is what it would be today without accounting for the future needs. In other words, the future proposed adds on those spaces required to account for 30 years' worth of growth.
30 years' worth of growth only goes from 1112 to 1199?
And the reason that is, that's a great question, is because when we plan for growth, the growth is mostly identified in staff spaces. Because when you plan for facilities and you plan for their growth, you size the core of those facilities for the ultimate occupant load. Do you understand what I'm saying there? In other words, you wouldn't come back and necessarily add core facilities. You would plan the expansion so that the staff could be brought on board. And that's why that delta is a little bit less than what you would expect. That's an excellent question.
But we're really that deficient today, almost by half.
Just like the study yielded. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to build on that, and it's a great question, our mission is not to generate large numbers. Our mission is to be uber-efficient in this process. And throughout the entire, you know, exercise, we're always looking for ways to share, ways to be more efficient, ways to suggest spaces, you know, could be used flexibly so that we can keep those numbers down greatly.
I had a question. You focus basically on square footage, not so much conditions of the square footage?
That is correct. And we did do a visual conditions assessment and actual facility conditions assessment in terms of getting into the nuts and bolts of structure and systems was not a part of this study. But of course, if we visually observed anything that felt like it needed to be brought up, we did talk about that as part of this scope. Okay. You have another question? Great discussion. Okay, so finally, we get to the conceptual designs. This is done in a narrative format, and I want to go through these because not every project has a master plan associated with it. In other words, you all have some facilities that actually function quite well and don't necessarily need that level of attention. So I'm going to go through these kind of at a high level. And remember that we're going to come back to a lot of these as we go through the next round of exhibits. So the administrative building that we're in here, and one of the things that was talked about as a part of this study is should this facility be replaced? And should it be replaced somewhere on this campus? So that's one of the options that we're going to talk about later. The Bluffton location in terms of the... The Bluffton location in terms of the Myrtle Park, that site was planned for an addition building, the way it was master planned. So if services needed to grow there, that seemed like a logical solution. The Hilton Head facility is kind of wide range of functions inside of it. It's a really critical footprint within the county. And so we've looked at several different options of ways to allow the functions that need to expand there to do so, which perhaps means a few of the other agencies that have sort of landed there over time need to relocate to other facilities. We'll talk some more about that again. The Human Services in Bluffton, the A and D is really needing to expand into the Government Center at Myrtle Park, which is one of those drivers to again add on to that second administrative building there. And in Hilton Head, the Human Services component, the DSN and Veterans Affairs, they really are important elements within that existing government center there. You'll see in our plans that we address the expansion. Public Works and Facilities Maintenance in Beaufort, we're talking about a new administration building for Public Works. I'm sure some of you all have been out there and seen that facility. I will say that it's about consolidation of services with on that site. And of course, we'll get into logistics of how that can be informed in terms of how it's planned so that things can stay operational during that process. So Public Works also has a footprint in Bluffton, a pretty wonderful location for services. There will be some additions made to add on for their needs over time, and I think we'll talk about those. And again, you know, their office spaces are currently occupied by some other functions that might find better homes elsewhere in the county. We're going to talk about adding a MRF to the solid waste and recycling site. Records Management is a pretty amazing facility. Of course, we intend for that to stay. Parks and Rec's Administration, we've talked about expanding their administrative offices at both Buck Walter and Burton Wells. And storage is a huge component for them, as it often is with parks and recreation. Animal Control has a wonderful facility. Think the way those services are being delivered is changing, certainly without any needs there. The Coroner has a pretty nice facility that was customized for him. He's very happy there, and they would intend on staying as well. Our Library Study was interesting because it actually paralleled a master plan that you all had done recently. And so what we did is we used that as a basis and worked with library staff to scale that up appropriately to talk about what their needs were beyond that study. Electors and voter registration over in VIV seems to be pretty well-located in terms of strategically, they have that good storage. They do need some satellite offices, which we'll talk about. EMS, we did talk about a new EMS station as opposed to being sort of co-located within the warehouse. We will talk about that some more in a moment as the locations sort of shifted around and thought. Ladies Island Airport, to be specific, it says airport generically, that's not the Hilton Head Airport, that was the Ladies Island Airport. We did speak with them about a need for a new terminal and some additional maintenance and storage spaces, but that's a pretty well-operational facility. Then we get into sort of the Justice Components, which is Law Enforcement Center and Special Ops. I'll touch on these briefly. And again, I think Brooke here is going to be the expert on that, and we'll share more details on those when we get into those components later. But a new LEC, either downtown, off-site, we're going to look at options for that. Special Ops has a wonderful location that serves them very well and I think is expandable. We would want to allow that to remain in situ. We're going to talk about the Federal Building here downtown as a footprint in the inventory that might have another use. And then, of course, the Detention Center is a key component of this as well. You know, it has a footprint here right on this campus, and its adjacencies to the courts is a huge function of that. I just touched on that in terms of the courts, multiple locations required to stay in the county seat, and those are conversations that we'll talk about. There's so much synergy here with courts and detention on the same site. It's a really tough synergy to disrupt. You can see there, there's a lot of those courts affiliated functions, PPP, DJJ, and all of those. Those are functions best suited if they're near the courthouse, obviously. So part of the solution will come from that. You see there Magistrate Court in Bluffton. We're going to talk about a larger facility for them. The Probate Court in Bluffton as well. I think we're still looking for the right location for that even as we speak. And in terms of the Probate Court in Hilton Head, there's some real tangible reasons for that to need to stay where it is despite that building space being challenged, and I think we'll get into those details. Thank you for sticking with me through that narrative. What will happen as a result of that is now we will have talked about literally everything within the suite of services, and no one will have been left out.
Might want to pull your mic over a little closer.
Yeah.
Okay. Just pull the whole thing around where you get a closer. There you go.
I'm wondering too much. Forgive me. All right. So let's focus on the downtown campus as the first one of the study areas that we're going to get into in detail. Here are those nine areas that we're going to speak to. We're going to look at the downtown campus, EMS headquarters, Public Works, the Government Center South, Solid Waste, the C Trawler Site, which has been a fun study, the LEC, Oakley Site, Special Ops, and then Government Center South. So lots of locations across the county. So I'll start on the downtown campus. You have those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 buildings as Arthur Horn is counted in that inventory. You can see there what that total inventory is here on site, exists around 240,000 square feet. You do have existing parking in total of 656 spaces. You can see all those buildings here. You're all very familiar with that. It's a wonderful location right here in the downtown. You have an intersection that's sort of at the key, the key intersection. It's a great amenity. You're developing in an area that is governed by other guidelines for development. This is the Boundary Street redevelopment, which sort of touches on the entire corridor. And really, you can see the idea there that was being promoted is bringing buildings to the edge of the street and tucking parking and hiding all those things behind. So it's just about promoting sort of that urban development footprint. And yes, this site has some FEMA constraints, and you can sort of see that there. This is the updated map. But one of the great things about that is, is the area that's within that gray, the 1% chance is an area that we're not building in. It's an area for parking. And so I think that that sort of mitigates any of those challenges as we see them as they continue on this site for development. So what all are we planning on this site? And here is a program that begins to list those out. Okay, so you see there, we talked about earlier a new administration building. You see a size and all of those functions that are listed there. That's pretty much everything that's in this facility as well as a few other functions. And that yielded a size. Then we have the Law Enforcement Center. And you see over there some options because we're showing that in different locations, but its size is consistent. And that would also include the Emergency Management Component. And then you can see the Judicial Center Components there. And again, it includes not only the courts themselves, but all of those court-affiliated agencies like DJJ and PPP that we mentioned earlier, the Public Defender. So that's their entire suite of Judicial Center spaces. And then, of course, we have the Detention Center. So all of these things, in theory, are on this site right now. And they fit in that previous slide that we looked at within that 264,000 some odd square feet. But you can see based on these numbers, they need much more than that. And that's what the master plan exercise.
Could you, before you leave that, could you elaborate a little bit on why some of the buildings have just one gross square footage number and some have three options and some don't?
Sure. I think that's related to certain options that we looked at afforded different building sizes. In other words, you know, one of the Judicial Center options you'll see is to expand immediately adjacent to the building. There was more room there so we could get a different square footage than we could if we approached the addition in a different way. So that leaves just the constraints of the existing site sometimes dictate a slightly different area that's available for development. Does that make sense? That's a great question. Am I in sync here? I am. So we're going to look at three options for the downtown campus, and I apologize because there is a ton of information on this slide. So what I'm going to do is kind of start with the drivers, because anytime we work on a master plan, there are always sort of rules of the road that we start with. One of the rules that this option tried to hold to was to keep everything west of Reebok. Okay, so everything on campus proper currently, administration, court functions. Law enforcement, we figured out would have to come offsite because of the development constraints, and you can see that's why that's listed over there. Another thing that we talked a lot about is parking. And one of the things that drives your ability to maximize development is surface parking versus structure. And we decided as a team that structured parking because of cost and other reasons was an approach that we would like to stay away from if we could and test what the scope of development is without requiring ourselves to move in that direction. And so that is a constraint, excuse me, a constraint that we held as we worked through this exercise. And that's true of all three options. Now, these options have similarities. And the reason they have similarities is because we're not planning on moving the Courts Building or the Detention Center. So there's going to be some consistencies, but we have some nuance in terms of how the other pieces can be formed around them that we want to speak to. So in Option 1, you can see there is a new administration building planned at the corner of Boundary and Reebok. That will be a wonderful facade that begins to occupy that corner and sort of that civic presence that the city also has, you know, at that intersection. You can see that we're expanding parking beyond, behind that. One of the commonalities in this option is to convert what that above-ground detention is to underground in this location, which allows us to increase parking in that area and still be shielded by the buildings. That's a great trade-off for structured parking as a solution for additional spaces. You can see in these diagrams consistently, the buildings that are sort of shaded in that buff color are existing. The areas that are red indicate new facilities. There's a long list of spaces that run down the right side over there that sort of give you all those relative sizes, but we felt like it would be of interest in time just to go through the master plan in general, right? So you see the new administrative building that's out on the corner. Brooke, do you want to take a minute and speak to the judicial components on site?
Sure. Thanks, Brad. So you can see, just as you mentioned, at the top of Reebok Road, there is the administration building. And it's new because if you move south, the existing administration building that's in Buff is actually housing a different function. So the solicitor and PPP, Public Defender, and the alternate for the juvenile detention group would be in there. We wanted to keep everything on this campus, as he's already mentioned, because there's already been such an investment for the co-location of the courts and the detention center. Separating those or moving those adds in a lot of transportation costs, a lot of other ripple effects that will happen. So keeping the detention center as it is, if we move to the bottom of that lot line, we're keeping as much of the detention center as possible, and then we're adding on to it with a new three-story detention in red. And then we're still keeping the co-location with the courts. We're adding it to become more of a courts complex in here in downtown Beaufort. And we are transitioning by having an annex, which is kind of the little red box in between the existing court building that you can see there on the top left, and then the detention center. So it's an annex that allows for the Bond Court to be there, and then it also connects to the new three-story Horn Building that you guys have. And it's looking at the functions within there and moving the magistrate court and the family court and the family clerk and the master of equity.
I have a question about the, so you'll add on to the detention center, that's the red color?
Yes, exactly.
It almost looks like it doubles the square footage.
It does. Right now, if you think about the new way of thinking about detention and treatment, the mental health crisis nationally, all those things equate to more program and treatment functions. Whereas existing detention centers that are already built or have been built in the last 20, 30, 40, 50 years don't have those programmatic elements. And so it's helping to expedite people through the system as well as giving you a more healthy community as they come back.
So the building where the sheriff's department is now would come down?
It would be demoed in this case because there is not enough square footage on the lot. And really, to keep the detention center there and provide for the current needs that it has as well as 30 years out, that was the best option for Option 1. You'll see some different options.
I noticed that across the street, across Reebok Road, you have identified a law enforcement center possibility. Is that what it is? It's not red, so that means it's not a new building? It would be a new building.
It would be a new building. It's just saying if we can't keep it on the left side or the west side of Reebok Road, there is potential for it to be on the east side. And we'll look at that in a little bit more detail in Option 1. If we want to keep it co-located in the downtown center of Beaufort, or whether it actually wants to move outside of the downtown area. So that was another discussion we had in terms of access, response time, all of those things. Being downtown, it limits response time and some of those things for the law enforcement officers.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. Can I circle back to courts and the Bond here? Bond Court would be a good one to start with. Could you tell me what the plan is with regard to, it sounded like you were moving the Bond Court out of the detention center, is that right?
Correct. Right now, it is in the detention center. We would be co-locating it to be more outside the secure perimeter once we're building on to the existing detention center. So where it was previously co-located, we would need to move it to make it more functional as well as keep the secure perimeter that's needed for that type of detention center.
Would it still be connected to the detention center?
Exactly. So it's hard to see in this diagram, but in between the two buff colors, meaning the existing courthouse and the existing detention center, there is a connecting corridor, and so it still keeps the connection to both.
Keeps the connection to the Bond Court or to the courthouse?
They're all connected.
My question is with the detention center and the Bond Court, not the courthouse?
They are all connected. So right now, it is co-located to connect to the detention center, meaning the Bond Court and the detention center are connected, as well as being connected to the existing courthouse. So it's a threefold way of access.
So that people can move from the detention center to the Bond Court without having to go outside?
Correct.
Could you then go over and talk a little bit about the probate judge, the magistrate's court, and what your proposal was for that?
Sure. Yeah, so your existing Beaufort County Courthouse in Buff houses most of these operations. A lot of them are undersized, and a lot of them don't actually have the adjacencies needed because it is an older courthouse with previous design from past times, and the court process has been modernized. And so it's looking at bringing those adjacencies together, limiting the circulation in the courthouse to create a safer courthouse in general for the staff, because that is another concern. And then it's, so in this option, inside the existing courthouse, Beaufort County Courthouse, we're keeping the grand jury, the jury assembly probate on that first floor because that's the most accessible, that's more public. And we're moving the circuit court and circuit clerk up to the second floor. And then we're moving out the family court and the family clerk and the master of equity as well as magistrate to the east, if you see that darker red corridor that connects to the three-story New Horn Building. So we're still maintaining staff access and an internal way to circulate between the two buildings, but we are more assigning the functions that need to be adjacent together appropriately within spaces.
Are you moving the magistrates in the Arthur Horn Building to a different facility?
We are moving them from the existing Beaufort County Courthouse to the new three-story Horn Building that's just to the east of it.
They're not in the existing courthouse at the moment, that's my question. They're in the Arthur Horn Building, so I'm trying to find out where you're moving them.
The family court and family clerk are currently in the existing Beaufort County Courthouse, as well as magistrate has an office there. And master of equity also has an office there.
So magistrates are all in Arthur Horn?
Okay.
So are you moving them somewhere else where they're staying in the Arthur Horn Building?
Are we talking about the magistrate?
Yeah, there's 12 of them.
They are staying in the Arthur Horn.
In the other different Bluffton.
In this plan, the magistrate is staying in Arthur Horn, and the additional functions on the upper floors would move into the administrative building, allowing the magistrate court program and family clerk and master of equity to all reside within the new Arthur Horn Building. Does that answer your question?
That answers it perfectly. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
May I ask a question, please? What is the current square footage of the Law Enforcement Center? And where is that located on this campus site in Option 1?
So the current Law Enforcement Center is, what does that say, 20,863 gross square feet? And it is located down there, you can see it labeled, it's the sort of right there next to Doom Street at the bottom, sort of next to the detention pod.
Okay, so then in Option 1, it is going to be replaced by the detention, new detention center, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and so the, if it's not offsite, it would go where you're showing that in Option 2, unless it goes entirely offsite someplace else other than what's being proposed?
That is correct. That is the approach that we're taking in this option. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a preference when you say, you know, if it's not offsite, in talking to the sheriff and his people, is there a preference from him as to where he feels? to the sheriff and his people, is there a preference from him as to where he feels he should be located?
There's been lots of conversation over the last year in multiple workshops and interviews with them. There's differing opinions because if we keep it downtown, people already know that's where they're located. There's already, staff are already, you know, coming to this area. But the response time to emergencies getting out of the downtown has been a driver for looking at other spots, being the ability to be somewhere near the interstate to increase the response time within Beaufort County, as well as cost. So downtown is a little bit more expensive than looking elsewhere.
Got you. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And one, one other question. I see where you're proposing the new three-story administration building or two-story with parking under that. If it's two-story and parking under that, is that in addition to all of that parking that is going to be there?
It, it would be, and, and the reason for that, maybe I should have touched on, the, the downtown has an overlay for parking, which is one per 1,000 square feet, which promotes less parking. That's a great thing from an urban footprint. That is not always an operational metric when it comes to the actual number of spaces that you need.
It may not be realistic.
It may not be realistic, and so those are the kind of contingencies that we built into this plan to account for that. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, so then, and it begs the question of, of actually two questions. If it's a three-story building and you make it a two-story building, what was going to be in the third story that now isn't going to be there? And the second thing is, what is the future three-story building that is being proposed? What is the usage of that?
Two great questions, and they actually are related because if you, if it was determined that three stories was the limit based on zoning and we wanted a floor of parking beneath, then that future footprint becomes part of the solution. That was envisioned as, as another pad for another building. We would assume that to be another civic building because this is now sort of developing out as your civic campus. And so frankly, part of the solution could be a phasing where you build a new administrative building of 60,000 square feet with parking below, and as the needs grow over time, you have that pad next door to expand into at a later future phase. Does that make sense?
No, not true. Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman? Larry, did you have a question?
One more question on the court. When you move the master of equity and the family court judges, or is a judge, to the Arthur Horn Building, will you also be constructing additional courtrooms on the second and third floor?
Yeah, on the second floor. We would be reconfiguring some of the Beaufort County courthouse to, if, if that's what you're asking, inside the existing courthouse, would we be reconfiguring?
In the Arthur Horn Building.
Oh, yes.
The Arthur Horn Building, you remove the master of equity and the family court over there, will you be building additional courtrooms on the second and third floor?
The answer to that is yes, in this solution. And remember, we're going to look at different solutions. And the reason that makes, makes sense is because you already have courts on this building, so the column spacing and the things that you need from a building infrastructure are in place so that you could add courtrooms that would stack. Now, the biggest constraint within that, I'm sure you all know, is what happens in the third floor in that building relative to the infrastructure for IT. And so that's, that's the push and pull that we're trying to manage as we look at solutions in this regard. But in this...
When you're, when you're looking at that, I would suggest you look at the adequacy of the two courtrooms on the first floor and make a determination as to whether they are considered adequate by anyone choosing them.
Yeah, we, we actually did look at that. We looked, we were given the existing floor plans for the new building, and we were able to look at whether those courtrooms actually fit the need for the magistrate, and it was a good fit, actually. So that was part of the reasoning for us.
Actually, actually, my opinion is it's not a good fit. And have you been over to the finished building or just looked at the plans?
Correct. We have not seen it finished.
Okay. Thank you.
Perhaps we should.
One final question. In, in all of these scenarios, the administration building is on this site, has it ever been considered that administration would move to an entirely new location?
Another great question. We definitely discussed that as a part of the study. We talked about the fact that you all have sort of built a group of services out at BIV, you know, this kind of thing's pop, you know, sort of conglomerated over time. We've talked about the logistics of getting outside of the city center and what that could offer, but I think what we kept coming down to is this kind of opportunity to consolidate all of your services and the efficiency that that brings. And that seemed to win out over moving administration off the site. You also sort of have the property for it. So, you know, it was one of those deals where, you know, the LEC, for an example, is a much larger footprint. It would need a larger area, but the administrative component is one that's probably pretty well-suited for this site. So what you will, you will not see an option from us today that has an administration building located other than here, but that doesn't mean that that couldn't happen, you know, as a future initiative takes hold. We were trying to consolidate services on the site and really leverage the investment that was already here.
Now, this, this is just creating a wonderful dialogue. You know, when you do these, I sat down and looked at these without your presenting information, and as you present information, it allays my fears in some areas and piques my interest in other areas, which is why we're having you do this presentation.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. Hopefully, we're answering your questions appropriately. Any other questions on side option one? Okay.
Does anybody else has any questions? I can't see anybody, so if you need to, please ask me questions now about option one. We'll get to option two now. Okay, go ahead.
So option two, again, remember similarities and differences. So in option two, the administration building stays in the same location. That building for the LEC that was dashed in in the previous scheme shows up on, across the street. And we realize that, you know, part of this visioning requires us to think about acquiring property and some of the other things, so that's sort of an aside for this, but the, the option here says, well, what if the LEC still wants to stay adjacent to the downtown campus? And so that's what you see that building there. Otherwise, I think administratively, you see the same top side of development on the site. What's sort of different about this one is the way that this building and the courts addition is handled. And Brooke, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So in this option, as you can see, the existing administration building has been demoed, and as Brent noted, it's on the corner, similar to option one in a new building. What we've created is more of a, more formal green space, a long Rebalt for the justice corps and for administration. And we've now given your existing courthouse a face to the public, as well as connecting to the north of it and having the public defender, the Department of Juvenile Justice, PPP, master of equity, family court, and family clerk moved into that red block that's attached to the north of the existing Beaufort County courthouse. In this one, we keep the circuit court and the circuit clerk probate and jury assembly and grand jury in your existing facility. And then the new three-story horn building stays as it is with the magistrate court. The bond court stays in that little red square that's connected to the detention center and to your existing Beaufort County courthouse, and the detention center itself stays as it was in option one.
One of the things on... Sorry, go ahead.
One of the things that concerns me is, you know, you made mention about prime real estate and physical structures and what it costs to build new or on something. The idea that we have a building that could be renovated, and in this particular option, we're tearing it down, and therefore that valuable space is lost. That seems to be a concern, to me, anyway.
I think that's a very valid point, and it's, we wanted to show that in one option. There was some discussion about condition of this building, its age and relationship to the inventory, but we shared your general opinion on that, and I think that's why you only see that as proposed in this option. And in options one and three, we're looking at ways of repurposing it.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anybody before we move on? Okay, let's move on to option three.
Very good.
See what's behind door number three.
I like it. So, so again, remembering that we talked about the opportunity from an urban planning perspective to get buildings up on that corner so that we can reinforce that boundary in Rebalt is this urban center that has the city of Beaufort and the county's facilities kind of all up there together. So in this option, we looked at creating a green space or plaza on that corner that could be ultimately flanked by two buildings. And what you'll see here is, in this option, we've put administration on the east side of Rebalt, but you can also note, as we discussed earlier, where that future expansion pad is, it could also flip over to that side and be a solution that stays entirely on this campus. And, and again, the, I'll, I'll let Brooke speak to her pieces, but the, this building that we're in is, is colored red in this, in this option because we are repurposing it as part of the new sheriff's LEC, which was the idea behind how we could get enough real estate for them to live on this site as well.
Yeah, exactly. So we are repurposing the administration building into part of the LEC function, and then we are building to the north of it to create that synergy on that boundary and Rebalt Street T. Again, very similarly to what you saw in option two, the existing Beaufort County courthouse, we have provided an addition to the north of it that does house public defender, Department of Juvenile Justice, PPP, master of equity, family court, and family clerk in that particular scenario. And then again, the three-story horn building that you see in red stays as is. The bond court stays with its connections to the existing county courthouse and the existing detention center. And then the building to the east of Rebalt, like Brent mentioned, could be administrative or it could stay on the same lot. And this was just trying to find synergies because now we do have LEC on the same footprint as court, as detention, and there's a lot of overlap there with them going to different court cases, a lot of synergies and a lot of collaboration that can happen when they're all coexisting on one spot.
I had a question. If you converted that to the LEC, with the new parking, there'd be enough space for all, where would that new parking come? Would you cover the existing, you don't cover the existing stormwater retention pond, but where would the new parking come in?
That's a, that's a great question and one of the challenges of the notion of bringing admin back onto this site. And I, I believe that we would have to consume the remaining, remainder of that area for parking to accommodate that, as well as some at the rear of the courthouse addition, should the administration building come back to the site. We did enough of a study to find out that it can fit, but it's going to be one of those that pushes the boundaries of the parking.
Because the public's going to be coming to the admin building on the other side of Rebalt Road.
That's exactly right, and that's a really good point. See, that's one of the challenges of this, and we actually have some opportunities and challenges listed later, but this is a true campus strategy where, where public parking could be immediately adjacent to admin building behind, but that staff perhaps would have to sort of cross, cross-revo in order to get it. So again, thinking of, thinking of your, your facility as a campus.
Two, two things jumped out at me. As Councilwoman Howard said, you know, in option one, you're talking about 425 parking spaces. This one has 336, and you show an underground stormwater retention that looks like it doesn't have parking above it. So that's a concern because I know there are ingenious ways, underground retention in parking lots allows you to have parking over them. So that's concern number one. Concern number two I had is with the administration building being on the opposite side of Rebalt, I too concluded, well, you know, you could have, you know, the workers, the staff park there. How do they get across the street? Is there a way for a bridge? Like in many urban cities, they have buildings that are connected by overhead bridgeways.
That is a, a great idea. It is something that we discussed, and I think if, if that is a concept that when added to this makes this more viable, we can do a little bit more research and find out the validity of that. That gets into, you know, constraints of whatever the Rebalt air crossing is. But again, I think as a logistical solution to the bulk of parking being across the street, it is sort of a time-tested answer that we could look at. Yes. In this climate, perhaps, you know, again, it's sheltered from the rain and it's a more direct connection. It's not so much as battling the cold as you will, but certainly a viable option.
And what is the maximum size? I'm sorry, this moment. What is the reason for the new three-story building being a 75,000 square foot in this option, whereas we were talking about a 90,000 square foot with the idea if we did less than that and had underground parking, we would use the future pad for expansion?
You have, you have definitely studied up. So the, the answer to that is that the second and third floor in the horn building would remain as is, which reduces the 90 to 75. So in the 90,000 square foot option, you're absorbing those functions because we're repurposing that building, but, but where we're not doing that, they remain in place.
Okay.
Quickly, what is a office slash retail two-story building?
Something that I was trying to strategically avoid. So during this process, we had talked about the option for having parking or a liner building that would be located where I believe the city of Beaufort currently has a fire station. Is that, is that that site? So that was contemplated during our study and has since been sort of advanced in conversation and probably not an option. So what that was, was us trying to grab some more parking as a campus solution that we don't think at this time is probably viable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on these? Just being mindful of your time. Great conversation.
Thanks.
So here comes the, the numbers. And again, before we get into all this, you know, clearly, these are projects that are phased. So when you start to see numbers on the screen, it doesn't mean that these are things that all come out at one time. This is, these are projects that are phased and implemented, you know, over a period of years that aligns with your capital funding. So just like anything, you have to think about which piece has to move first. So in this option, you kind of build a new administration building. It allows you to renovate this building, start to shuffle pieces around, and then the last phase will be to renovate the existing detention. You can see the price tag down there for all seven of those phases. This number will be the lowest number of the three options, but the reason for that is because, remember, the LEC sort of is dashed in this one. There's a little note down there at the bottom that tells you that if you add the LEC number, this option comes in around 306, just to give you an apples-to-apples number to the other two numbers that we'll view. So 306 for the first option. As you go to option two, I, I won't belabor the phasing just in the interest of time, but that yields a higher number of 329, and that's related again to the LEC and the cost being more expensive, you know, to build that here on-site versus building it off-site or out of the downtown area. That's related to property and other challenges. So this option came in higher than the first option, and then option three came in between. So again, I think what I would say is that on the order of magnitude, they're all fairly close together. One of the things we would have looked at is how does the repurposing of this building offer savings along those lines? And it did show up, you know, in, in, in this option versus the previous option where it was demolished in terms of it, it showed around a $10,000 deal.
Could you show option three numbers on the bottom? I don't see...
The option three number right here on the screen, 312, 321?
This option two I'm looking at, and then option three.
Oh, my goodness, you all. I apologize. I'm running two clickers. I got behind.
He did.
Yes. Thank you. 312 versus 321. 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 312 versus 320 for options two and three, remembering that option one was 306. So if we're playing the Price is Right, option one sort of wins, wins out in that battle.
Right. And, and none of these options talk about, well, the second and third option, the idea of having to put a bridge across REBOLT Road for people to cross over, you know, above the building rather than having to cross the street.
That's right. So we'll just add a million for that. No, I'm kidding. We, we, that would definitely, that would increase the cost, and if we wanted to look at that, that would be something that we would add to the estimate.
Since Joe was talking about a bridge, at the technical college, they have pathway underneath the road. Would that be a consideration? I'm not too sure with the movement of sand underneath may not be a good example.
That would be my hesitancy. It's typically in, in this area, we want to go up instead of down too far, but we could look into the logistics of that. I have seen that as an urban solution as well. I'm not so sure it would be possible to build a vault than it would a bridge, but those are, that's a great discussion. We'd have to look into that.
Speaking of the bridge, would it be considered happening closed? Having the employees having to walk from the admin building over to the parking lot, unexposed to the weather, I think it would be problematic. And so unless they got a covered walkway with some enclosure, I don't, I don't see that as being feasible.
Okay. I, I think that's the kind of discussions that we like to hear because we were ultimately hoping, you know, that a recommendation for one of these will come out of it. And I think that we've talked about bridge and some of the challenges of having this building on the east side. So really from our perspective, that feeds us into thinking that one of the other solutions might be better suited, or frankly, it ends up being some combination thereof. But we can certainly investigate bridge. You know, one of the things about bridge in this option is that you want to connect to the end of the sheriff's office, but not the middle of it because we want to maintain the security of that facility. But all of those things can be done in a very nice way. Okay. Great discussion. Anything else before we move to the other sites? Because I felt like we would spend the vast majority of our time on these and think the others are a little bit more straightforward perhaps. So there's a narrative here that we wanted to make sure that we take a couple of minutes to touch on because it's the sort of backbone behind why a lot of the reasons we had approached the detention center and courts that way.
So just, just as we've started to explain, it's really important for the detention center and its existing location to stay adjacent and connected to the courts because utilizing that allows less transportation. And the new construction to the east of the detention center is integrated and intentionally ties with the visual orientation, maintaining the circulation during phase one. So anytime we do touch an existing detention center, because it is a secure location, phasing has to be thought about really critically. And so we would always build new so that we can have the space to move people as we make those adjoining additions. When we think about the new construction, that phasing would be zoned off so that those areas are unoccupied and they stay with, in their secure perimeter. Because this is an urban multi-story, multi-rise, full-functional jail, operated 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, we would want to co-locate and relocate its new public entrance to a better visual location for staff as well as the intake. And so in those previous options that you saw, that was kind of some of the drives that you saw circulating the building as well as stacking. So anytime we're looking at stacking a detention center, we're looking at dividing those classifications of people and then really maximizing their core space. So right now, the, the detention center is undersized, and as we noted earlier, the programmatic areas and the medical, mental health areas, everything is undersized. And so we would be really looking at building up that core. And the size and the fit and the budget also rely on that existing building, building up that core. So basically, it's a really, really heavy cost for renovation anytime we're touching an existing older detention center. And so by allowing housing renovations to retain and upgrade the existing cells and meet those classifications, that is why we would be phasing it the way we are so that we can move people out of housing into the new building, renovate the existing housing to, to meet the standards required, and then move, relocate people back. And then for the courts part of the downtown piece, you guys have invested so much in this property. We want to maintain that investment and keep it co-located with the detention center and connected. We want to utilize the existing, existing Arthur Horn building space that has most recently been finished, and then utilize the existing Beaufort County Courthouse space and propose the right kind of additions and connections that can truly allow your existing courthouse to be secure from a circulation standpoint, secure for your judges, provide secure parking for your judges, and just provide a better overall experience for the citizens here that are coming to access those services.
Thank you so much, Brooke. So I'm going to breeze through these.
A quick question before you go on.
Yes, sir.
In your total cost on the bottom here for all the phases, does it include the acquisition of property?
We did, accounting for acquisition of property.
Yeah, thank you.
Based on just current land values. Thank you. So we, we put together some visuals, and I know that we're running really tight on time, so I'm going to kind of breeze through these. These are three-dimensional renderings, and really, we put these together to try and emphasize kind of how the massing would relate to those two buildings and create that urban core. So you can just see kind of how the pieces start to switch out back and forth as you manipulate these between each other. But again, this is sort of that option three that we landed on in our last discussion. And here they are just as a comparison. Again, there's lots of similarities, but you can see how a building on the corner for admin versus having a plaza on the corner, you know, really does change the nature of that development. We've already really talked through most of these opportunities and challenges, quite frankly, so I'm going to go ahead and just skip on to this next slide. So we're winding out of the downtown, and you asked us earlier, would the LEC be best located somewhere else? And this was a site that was suggested along those lines.
So this site is off of the freeway. It provides a better access to response time, and it's actually more centrally located within the county to provide better access to all parts of the county. When we look at this site, we're giving it a face to the, the road there, to the freeway, and we're providing secure parking out back, secured gate access, two different ways to get into this facility and out, maintaining all of their existing tactical fleet toward the back of the property within that secure parking lot area. And then along the, the detention pond that you can see there along the roadside, you'll see the shallow but linear long public parking area. So open public parking to the front of the building, and then of course, you can see the drive tucking back from the top of the site to the little red finger that's sticking out where we would have the forensic evidence, drive-through vehicle processing bay. Again, because there are ways to modernize your emergency approach to events or to weather or to anything that's happening within Beaufort County, there's also a bunk, so the bottom finger of that red building layout is a bunk area for the law enforcement agency to stay and provide the 24-hour service that is needed during those times.
Emergency management is also located within this facility. Is that right? So opportunities and challenges of those, again, the area, it's property you own, it's adjacent to another county facility, it's a central location. I think we touched on a lot of these. It is, you know, part of the site is adjacent to a nature preserve, but there's certainly enough room based on this study to, to fit within the facility. It is away from the city center, but I think we've talked about there might be some positives to that also. And then here's a number where that came in. And again, I think, you know, again, that, that's one of those that we talked about earlier when we talked about phase one. So that was the off-site LEC location, which was on the Oki D Highway adjacent to Animal If it was determined that another site for this was more feasible, you could literally test this acreage and pick that up and set it down as a means for determining if another site was a viable site. So moving then on to EMS, your EMS site over as a part of the warehouse, which actually co-locates three or four different county facilities. And so we wanted to test to see if it was viable to expand that in situ. And so you see there the existing warehouse. We're showing a staying, again, because there's lots of county sort of functions in it. I'm, I'm not sure if long-term that's, that's the best plan, but for today, it was. And then you, so the idea here is that, yeah, you can fit the program for a new EMS facility on this site, but you have no room to maneuver, there's nowhere for lay down, the actual contractor to build it would probably have to get a piece of land somewhere else. It, it was a really, really tight site for, for, for working all of these things on this property. It's a triangle. And so while, while we pushed to get it in there, you know, this site was really deemed infeasible just because of the constraints of the existing. And so then we began to look elsewhere, and I think, I think you're all aware that one of the sites that we looked at was what's called the old Bowlin Alley site, right down REBOLT adjacent to what the city of Beaufort's new fire station. And this is one of those things where at the time, it was viable, and we invested a pretty good amount of energy in studying it there, but this site is now not feasible. But in similar fashion, it's a two-acre site. So ultimately, if we, if we're looking for something that fits this program, we're looking for a two-acre site, and we can achieve that EMS expansion as they, as they envisioned.
Is that because it's sold or?
That's a great question. I don't, I don't know the detail.
Has it sold? I don't know. It's closed.
Yeah, we, we would have not, I don't think, I think we would encounter some opposition from the city of Beaufort putting it there in that location, and we need to have some more discussions with the EMS program, with the, with the city officials.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So then I was going to shift on to the public works site. I know Neil was back here earlier. Again, you all are familiar with this facility. It's, it's actually three or four facilities out on a huge piece of property. You can see there the size of admin, the, the garage for fleet, several covered storage areas. And again, you can see there kind of that parking analysis that's there. So a couple of drivers for developing this site. One being that the existing needs to stay operational while anything is happening here. So in like fashion with the downtown sites, you'll see the buff color. That is the existing fleet building. You can see there's a little T that is dashed in front of it. I don't know if, I hope you can see that. That would be the administration building. So the concept here is that all these things could happen around this while it stays operational, and then ultimately, the administrative building would be torn down when the new administrative building is built out in front. Couple of things about the reorg of this site. It does, as I mentioned, keep the existing fleet services facility and expand on that as the program needed. It keeps the existing fueling station, which definitely has some costs associated with it. But it does create a better, a cleaner division between the public face of the building and the secure parking area. The, the site has that primary access road. You can see now that that comes in, and once you enter the secure lot, all of staff has that adjacent parking within the secure perimeter. And then behind the new administrative building, you have all of those conditioned yard spaces, you have covered exterior storage, you have your fleet, your garage area, and then you can sort of add on pole barns as needed as the county acquires more fleet, more services that need to protect you from UV. You can literally scale that site up to the right as time goes on. So it's a great piece of property. This is one of those where we didn't have too many things pushing against us, unlike the downtown site. So we had room to sort of get in here and maneuver and really sort of generate what, what the program requires.
What's the total acreage of that?
That's a great question. Was that on the previous slide? It was not. I do not know the total acreage of that site. I apologize. I should have that information. And you know, we're only touching the front third of it as long as those lines.
I mean, no, it's large. I just wondered.
There's a great amount of property that goes back behind there as well.
Right.
I mean, the total is probably over 100 acres.
I believe it is.
Yeah.
So again, I think when you talk about a public works facility of this size, we're starting to scale down in numbers, but if you look at the administrative building, the additions to fleet and office support facilities, you know, that came in around 14.7. But again, those are also pieces that could be done, you know, and scaled over time in phases. Public Works? So we'll do the government center south in Bluffton. Again, Bluffton, you all well know, is sort of exploding right now. I think that that's a, a, a reason for us to look at services. This is a great site that you all have and developed, you know, effectively planning for expansion. So here's the layout. Again, you'll see the buff building kind of down there at the bottom. That's your existing government center. It's that two-and-a-half-story nice building, has a wonderful lawn out behind it, which ultimately was planned for a mirror image building. So certainly you would, you would find, okay, so there's another 20,000 square foot facility we can build there. We had thought initially that we could sort of expand to the north, but then there's a sort of economic development or stimulus project that's happening up there, but became our neighbor halfway through the study, and so we said, okay, we're not going up there. And, and the other piece that was challenged in this area really was related to surveying courts. And so one of the things that we looked at, being very careful with nomenclature, was a South County Justice Center that would live on this site. And you see, we've shown two options here, one on the right, which is on the existing property. It just doesn't necessarily have the most wonderful of locations. It's kind of tucked in over there against the marsh, and it's not as visible and doesn't have as much adjacent parking as we would prefer. And so along those lines, we provided another option, which is to purchase the parcel immediately adjacent to the left. And if you did that, you can see that it affords a much more gracious opportunity to plan for parking and secure perimeter. It does continue kind of that lawn that's established as part of the master plan on this site. Brooke, is there anything specific?
On the left, you mean on the west side of the existing?
On the west side. Yes, sir. Thank you. So the, the west side property, all of that information is dashed because that we're saying that is another option, and it is on, you know, it would require, it would require purchase of that property, but long-term would set you up for a better parking solution and more room for growth. So again, I think that was, that was the, the idea behind that. Some of the functions that are in Hilton Head right now would be moving into this facility. And again, as we get those court-related functions sort of closer to where the courts are, so there's also DEHEC that's in the existing bottom floor of the, of the one building there closest to the south. So it's not even a full footprint available for administrative growth. But we're talking about the accessory, ROD, Treasury, y'all know the functions that are down there. Okay? Anything else on this option, Brooke?
No, but I just think we were trying to provide better access for the public rather than having to go quite so far.
That's right.
I have a question about that justice center. What do you envision going in there?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, please?
What do you envision putting into either of the justice centers that you're proposing here? Option one and option two, you wouldn't be building both of them, I guess, so what would you be putting in to one of them?
Yeah, it could be a potential for magistrate or probate to be located here. You see it in some other options moving forward, but that was a potential.
Magistrate and probate were the two primary drivers of that, and part of that was related to the fact that probate also has a footprint in Hilton Head that we'll talk about in a moment that might need to stay as well. Is that your question?
I think so, yes, it does. Okay, thank you.
So again, opportunities and challenges, we just spoke through them briefly, you know, new government center within a public courtyard. The challenge of the option two, really, it's a better layout, but it requires more parking. Whoops, did I go? I did, I went too far.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Going back to the site, proposed new administration building, what would be housed there that's different than what is housed in the current building, number one? And number two, the way this is laid out, you could be confusing the public if there are two different functions? Building A houses certain things, building B houses other things. I park at building B, but I really shouldn't be in building A? I park it, building B, but I really shouldn't be in building A? And can they be attached by a covered walkway?
I think the answer to the last part of that is easier, and it is, it is yes. In terms of the functionality, you know, you have auditor, treasurer, you have the assessor, the register of deeds, voter registration, legislative delegation. All of those are functions that are currently in the existing, as well as dehec has just about the entire first floor, which is not even in this list. So really, really, the county services footprint in our study scope is those upper two floors. All of those are pressing in needs. And there are also agencies that are located in the Hilton Head Government Center that are courts-related, that would be better suited to come out and come to this facility as we plan for this new magistrate court to be at this location. So that's, that's what would occupy the new county administrative facilities and allow those other pieces to expand. And then the court is, as we just described, so.
Yeah, I like the idea, if we're going to be a new justice center, option two seems to be preferential because of the way the building is and parking that could be there. And option one, could you put additional parking there in place of that building?
You could, certainly, yes. And that would be a way of sort of leveraging the maximum amount of value in that land. You know, there's some marshland over there on that edge, so we're trying to be careful not to go too far in that direction. But yes, you certainly could.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this site? Thought that might come up today.
One additional thing I'll point out about option one on this site is that we also would have to do a recalculation of the stormwater capabilities for the site. We don't, we're not sure with all those detention ponds that run around this site, what all that water is carrying before the development of the entire area there, even outside of the Myrtle Park complex. So we may be limited on buildings in option one on additional space there due to that fact, because of the unknown stormwater issues at this point that we would have to evaluate when we got into design drawings.
Thank you, Eric. That's a great point. Okay, we've kind of talked through the opportunities and challenges. You see there the two numbers, and that incorporates both facilities. And it, the difference in delta is the price of property effectively is really what we're talking about there. Okay, moving on to special ops.
So again, this is the existing location of special ops. They're located in a great location, very accessible and higher response times. So they like being in their location. It's also a private location, which is really important. So here you can see the entrance off Okati Highway. The building in buff is their existing building. I'm sorry, the building in red is their existing building. So directly in front, oh, yeah, okay. It's too far away for me to see. The building in buff is the existing building. And so, I'm sorry, the parking, the 19 parking spots are in front of the existing and the new addition that we would put to it. So very, very small, almost like a house that's on that property. And so we would be adding office expansion to that, as well as a command and patrol storage. To the left is where their new garage is for all their tactical support, equipment and vehicles. And then to the back of the property, as you can see, the aerial image is kind of hazed over, but if you look in the bottom right corner, you're going to see these little covered buildings sticking out over the property line. They are currently built over the property line, and so we would be rectifying their location to build within the existing property line, as well as keeping the existing training house that they have in the upper right-hand corner.
So again, great location for them, serves them well, room to expand, wonderful footprint. And their needs were smaller in scale than some of the others. You can see the costs associated with that there.
Does council know where we're talking about on this particular site?
No.
This is a piece of, this is a piece of property, yeah, this is a piece of property located on 170 near Camp St. Mary's. If you go down, coming out of Buford, it would be on the left. If you're coming up from Bluffton, it would be on your right, right before you get to the turnoff for Camp St. Mary's. And it's, you barely can see it. There's a lot of vegetation in front of it. It's a very small site at this point, but the sheriff's office uses it for special operations.
Catch. What's that? Oh, sorry.
Just, just one other note, this, this would be, special ops is something that we would never co-locate with the, the main headquarters. It always needs to be separate for security and confidentiality.
What's the, 22 bays?
22 bays?
I don't know, it's.
That's, that's covered storage for their existing vehicles, boats, all of that kind of stuff.
So bay is a what?
Sort of covered exterior storage, like a pole barn, if you will, so bay, a bay for.
Okay, I've never heard that term before.
Yeah, like, almost like parking spots, but it's a bay if it's covered.
I've heard pole building stuff, and that'll be, but go ahead, thank you.
They have a bunch of trailers and boats and all kinds of various and sundried things out there. That's right. So solid waste and recycling center site, this is an existing service site for you all. I think one of the things we talked about here is just integrating, you know, a MRF to this site, materials reclamation facility. There is adjacent property that's owned to the south that we initially looked at developing, but I think it was determined infeasible as we looked at this next phase. So you can see, this is very simple. This is just extending the parking the way that it exists today, kind of adding new, some new spaces adjacent to the building for workers, really. But it provides that pull-through access, so you just continue down the drive aisle. You literally drive through the building, things are offloaded, and you drive out the other end. And that's the way that most MRFs sort of are, are positioned. It's 15,000 square feet. If you were expanding this, in theory, you would begin working on the property to the south. Again, I think it's like, it's land that you have, we couldn't do the original size, you know, in terms of a challenge. We originally did look at a larger MRF facility, but the 15,000 was determined feasible on this property. And you can see there the price point where that comes in. Okay? Pretty straightforward. The seat trawler site is one we've had a lot of fun with, one that is also going to be impacted by the new 278 exchange. And so we went through multiple iterations on this site, how to convert it into a park, how to convert it into a community facility, how much parking can we actually integrate into it? You know, is there feasibility in closing ramp, which I understand was probably pretty unpopular? You know, you know, what are, what are all the opportunities that we can do to, to develop this site to a better county amenity, including buffering to the existing neighborhood, rerouting of streets? I don't know that we've landed on anything necessarily that's been accepted yet as a part of this, but we did look at multiple options for ways to bring this site to a better county use.
Let me, if, whenever you finish, I need to add something to that.
Thank you, Eric. I'll just, I'll just end right here and say that the third option was the highest cost for development, and we included this one in the study just because it was the most parking that we could achieve.
So again, this is a, this is an existing county-owned facility that will need some type of improvement regardless of what we do with it. You all have instructed us to look for a different site for ferry embarkation, and we're doing that now. You'll be briefed on that here shortly. But this is a, this is an issue that we're going to need some direction from council on as to what to do with this particular location and how we should improve it in short order.
Thank you. Okay, I promise we're almost there. Government Center South in Hilton Head, one little square building, 8,000 square feet, full of various and sundried functions. And all of them are important over time. Some, some things have kind of outside agencies like Clemson Extension and some other things, which are also very viable programs, have, have ended up having space in there, but, but really, every, every other department in there is sort of constrained. And so really, what we've looked at, this is the existing diagram, and then this is kind of the proposed, if you will. And you'll see down there, we're dislo, we're relocating, excuse me, some departments, probation and pardon and parole, we talked about, voter registration, we talked about, all those things would be moving, in theory, those two things, in theory, would be moving to that new government center we just talked about at Myrtle Park. The other outside agencies, we need to work with them to find space for. And again, I think that the county's done a great job of that. We didn't identify anything specific here, but we will work forward on that. The, the big push here is the probate court, and I want to let Brooke speak to that. We sort of pushed back and forth on whether or not that really needed to be in this footprint, but there's a real reason why.
So I think everybody's aware of the national mental health crisis that's ongoing everywhere, how to get those court cases through, to expedite those court cases, how to keep people from decompensating within court that do have serious mental illness. So this location is actually near one of your hospitals, and so because of that, that proximity is really important when it comes to court cases. You want to have the proximity near the hospital because if you do have commitments, you actually need medical staff to be able to come, appear in court, address whatever's needed in that case, and go back to their job. So this actually helps you guys expedite, expedite those types of court cases within your county.
And those, those physicians are sort of doing that on their own time a lot, or so it's one of those things where the more you can minimize that transportation, the more efficient that service becomes. So that's why you see in the solution, the probate court function has significantly expanded. And one of the other issues with that is related to security, because there's less separation of function in that area between judge access and those that are in court. So renovation to this facility, we spoke through the opportunities and challenges. We're talking about an internal renovation that comes in at a much more palatable price point. Okay. Keeps all those services that everyone's accustomed to there at the front door. Good. Next to last, human services. What a wonderful facility. You know, the, the first floor is pretty much taken by DSS, and that works really well for them. And so we proposed that that would stay. But this is a diagram of the existing second floor. You can see kind of all those folks that are, I'll highlight juvenile justice, PPP, which is actually listed two times, and the public defender. So those are those court-affiliated functions that we're talking about that would serve well to move just down the street onto the campus adjacent to the courthouse. And we talked about that in the downtown master plan. That would free up spaces in the upper floor of this building for alcohol and drug to expand to meet their needs. We've talked about having a space for community engagement. COSY, Human Services Buford, is located in a small house down the street here. That serves them well, but we don't know if that's a long-term solution. So this would afford them an opportunity to move into the building. There is a Buford Jasper EOC that has a footprint on the upper floor that we would leave unchanged just based on that agreement, but that we even looked at an opportunity perhaps for Veterans Affairs to come here. You all may be aware they're in the City of Buford's facility downstairs.
It's my understanding, a few years ago, they were in this building.
I think they were. And then I think they went out. And one of the things that we had spoken with them about is just being in a place that's dignified. And, you know, one of the initiatives of this study was to consider how to get county services into county facilities and out of other facilities. So this seemed like a logical, it's, it's near the, the point of service that they have currently. It's a good facility. It's right immediately adjacent to the elevator. That was the only challenge in doing this here, if we'd loved to have it on the first floor. But DSS really does consume that footprint. Good question. So it's about shifting court functions towards the courts to free up room for these other agencies that are more, probably more better served to live in the human services building. Okay? Again, it's minimal renovation required, and it does consolidate those functions that we just talked about. There's a renovation price point for this facility. And again, it's really, this is the second floor only. And then our last topic for today is the federal courthouse on Bay Street.
So the federal courthouse on Bay Street, this was an existing building that you guys have that we were asked to look at to see if this could actually help the current existing LEC address some of their limited square footage that they currently have. Currently, their existing facility is maxed out. There is no storage. People are working pretty much in every, every corner of that building. So their needs are pretty great. When we think of how the project is phasing along, within the timeframe that we've already covered, right now, they're already beyond their needs. And so if we look at this building as a potential release valve before they can get to a new facility that would be built to accommodate them and function the way that it needs to, this is what you're seeing here. So on the first floor, looking at if we can keep the, can't read that far away, the enforcement and patrol division on the right side, administration in the middle, and then kind of the citizen and staff management and the main office toward the front of the building on that first floor. And then if we move to the second floor, we have kind of the sheriff command on the upper level. And then on the left side, which is kind of where the circulation ends up being for this building, there's the main stairs and there's an elevator. So that's kind of defining your secure perimeter within the building will remain on the left for the first floor and the second floor. They also have a basement level, which we were trying to maximize square footage for this building. So we were looking at how investigations could fit there. What's, what's to be known about this building is, although it's a, it could potentially be a release valve to help give them some extra square footage, the synergy of having all the departments in one place is incredibly important. And so this would be decentralizing some of that because we would not have emergency management within this building, and we would not have their IT division within this building. As well as this would just have to be an interim solution. This cannot be a final solution because it does not even have the same square footage as their existing building. So the other thing to note is that it is an old existing courthouse. It was built to be secure. It was built to have a certain footprint. It has its own structural grid. The way that it's built is load-bearing, and it's not going to be very easy to modify. So we are kind of stuck within the existing footprint of the building unless you want to invest significant cost.
It is a beautiful facility. It's just not very flexible. You're exactly right. So I think we, Brooke literally just touched on the opportunities and the challenges. And so again, the renovations to bring that up to a usable state and, and a beautiful one it could be would be around $2.2. Whoops. So as we round out here, just wanted to make sure that we touched on some of the positive aspects. You know, there are certainly, based on current GIS information, planning these facilities would allow to offload others. So there's an offset in terms of overall cost, and there's a pretty significant one there. It, it would be viable as these other sites are brought online. So that's worth of note. And then the last topic we'll touch on, you know, again, I think just related to COVID is that we, we certainly have talked with all of your staff about that individually. Several folks learned new things as they went through this process, but nothing that overly drew a desire to not have a footprint still for services. People are working from home. It can lead us to having flex offices that can make things a little bit more, you know, efficient in the office. But I think as an overriding topic, everyone saw that as a temporary and not a permanent constraint, and was, was sort of limited on being willing to release space permanently along those lines. Okay? That's all the information that we have for you all today. I'm sorry that we ran it so far over. It was a lot. And if you don't have any additional questions, we'll.
Go back to the. Just a couple of points. Point number one, in the conceptual design of the Rebo Road Boundary Campus, was the consideration of putting all of the utilities underground, having fiber connecting all of the buildings for IT, having the ability to have those buildings be able to function with generators in case of bad weather, things of that nature?
We did talk about that, and specific with regards to the fact that you've invested a lot of that stream to get the server room to be on the third floor of Arthur Horn. So the trunk is being brought here already. So it, it seems like that would be something that could be easily expanded upon.
Yeah. And the last little tidbit from me is, I saw all of the wonderful landscaping designs, the trees, so I hope there's a lot of money trees on there to pay for all of this.
I was waiting for one of those to come out. Well, well played.
I also just wanted to know, within that cost, you know, the infrastructure, when it comes to justice facilities, specifically the detention center, all of that does have secondary operations. So there would be generators, and all of that's addressed in those costs.
Okay, thank you. Are there any? Are there any further questions from county council members?
Just one. Go back to law enforcement and the sheriff proposal to the new courthouse, I mean, the old courthouse, as a temporary measure at this time. So even going there now does not address the long-range plan for this law enforcement, right?
It definitely does not, based on our analysis. Eric, did you want to say something?
Yeah, whenever you all finish. I can address that in more detail for you.
That is correct.
I'll wait for you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Very good job.
Yeah, so with regards to law enforcement center versus what present needs are, what we're doing right now, based on our conversations with the current sheriff, is we're programming his space for the tenure of his service to the county as sheriff. Law enforcement center would come most likely, based on discussions with him, after the current sheriff is out of office.
Thank you, sir.
And then, second thing I would tell you all, one thing council needs to be aware of and possibly consider moving forward. Right now, in Beaufort County, we're providing a lot of space in existing county buildings free of charge to outside agencies that are using our space, while at the same time, we're paying rent. Cozy is a prime example of that. We're renting a house to provide the space for county facilities while we're giving away free space in existing county buildings to outside agencies who are not paying anything to the county, and that will be something we will be bringing to you all at a later date for consideration on rectifying some of those situations. So just wanted to put that on your radar so that whenever we do discuss that. I need a little direction. Do I now?
Is this going to be highly political?
It could be.
Okay.
I don't know to be highly political, but you're likely to hear, I mean, whenever you allow people to use space free, and then you say, hey, you either got to go somewhere or start paying rent, then you all as council are probably going to hear about it, I would think.
I had one question for you about the lab for the sheriff's department. That last slide showed selling that facility. Would they be consolidated with the new LEC, wherever that?
Yeah, either new LEC or the new special ops center would find a space for them to go.
Okay.
So we are... I didn't think, whenever I said that would only be an hour, I did not really think that would go just an hour. I knew it was going to be a complex discussion. We're going to go as long today as you all want us to go. Whenever you all are tired and say, hey, we've heard enough today, then we can close out the workshop for you. But I didn't know if anybody needed a break right now.
That was going to be my suggestion, that we take a five-minute break, come back and talk for a couple minutes about what we just heard, and whether or not we want more to be done today or set up another meeting, because this is a tremendous amount of information. So let's take a five-minute break and come back at, well, nine minutes, come back at 3:50. Before we move on, Preaching Associates did an outstanding job of the task that was presented to them. We have received a tremendous amount of information today that deserves a discussion, obviously, and a direction. The discussion we need to have is, what do we do with this information? And how do we direct administration? So let's take a couple minutes to talk about those two elements of this, is you've heard a lot of things. Each of you may have an impression of what you learned today, what you thought, and where we want to go from here, and how we want to direct administration. Obviously, administration lives this on a daily basis. And from my point of view, I need them to say to us, based upon the information that was presented to you, here are the top three, top five, top 10, whatever they come up with and say, in order for us to do the job for the county of Beaufort, here is where we have to move to now, and what it's going to cost, and how are we going to get there? How are we going to finance this? How long is it going to take? This is a 30-year plan. Well, in 30 years, building all of this stuff, it's going to be a phenomenal cost. But obviously, there is something that has to be done. So I'm going to open it up to those of you in council and online. What do you think? How do we direct administration moving forward? Anybody want to start?
I'll take a chance.
Go ahead, York.
Yeah. There are a lot of moving parts in this plan, and there are a lot of directions and proposals for different departments. And I think we need to go ahead and start prioritizing what's important now for us to move on and see how that plays out. Because if you do one thing here, you got to do something else over here later. So I think, you know, for me, having the staff to give us a top priority, and I'll use the law enforcement as an example, if law enforcement determining where they're going to be is a top priority, then we need to go ahead and move on that. I'm not saying law enforcement is, but I'm just saying if that's the case. You know, and then all the other moving parts as it relates to law enforcement moving out and how we handle the detention center. It seems like on this site right here, where we are, the detention center is a driving force for us, which includes or impacts law enforcement. So I would hope that the administration will just give us some kind of direction on what's they consider number one, and then we can start putting the little pieces together, the puzzle together, as we move toward a 30-year outreach.
I think that's an excellent observation, York. You know, clearly, they were talking about the centralization of certain functions that seem to work hand in hand. That's what I drew from this. So that is an excellent observation. Alice, go ahead.
I'd like to commend the group, commend them for the study they did. They did an excellent job. Some of us have been waiting for this for a long time. I've been on council almost seven years, and the detention center and EMS and Public Works, when I took tours of those my first year, I was appalled at some of the conditions that our employees were working under, and also the conditions of people who have no choice on where they're at in the detention center. I think staff probably knows what their priorities are, but this gives us the basis to go forward. But those three, to me, I personally think should be a priority. All of them are of a concern, but I think EMS and Public Works, which actually looks like an easier fix than I thought it would be, and of course, the detention center, which has, as York put so well, other consequences to that, but it certainly needs to be done.
Mm-hmm. Logan, comments?
Can you hear me, John?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I'm just kind of soaking a lot of information, to be honest, on some of these different projects. But the detention center is going to be a big one we have to look at. I'm just really curious for the three that they were giving us at the beginning, what would be the main focus if we want to rebuild or tear down and start over? Seeing those options is, I think, going to have to be one of the first decisions we make in that area, see which way we can go with the others as well.
Okay. It does seem that they were indicating with the detention center, the way the the way the program was for the detention center, the way it operates now, is not the way they're looking at the way a detention center should operate in the future. Therefore, it would be to create a new det- detention center that molds it a different way. At least that's what my understanding was from what they said. Uh, Chris? Oh, go ahead, Larry, you were next.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think that we've had a, a shift, um, in population. And I think that there's going to be, and it's something I've been aware of for a long time, very many more people seeking services in areas where we have inadequate facilities and staffing. Um, we have a concentration now in our county campus, as it should be. But there are, uh, the population growth that will show up in this census is probably going to show considerable amount of people over, uh, in the Bluffton area in particular. And I think that Little Park, uh, facility is inadequate at the moment. And I think that, you know, people over there, um, when there's a demand for service, crowds can become, um, quite big. Uh, I think that the magistrate court there is going to be serving a, a larger group of people. And I tried to convince county leaders years ago that there was an opportunity right on that space that was there, right at walkout the back door. Uh, we already have a, a lot, a building can go up on. Um, but everything up on the third floor, where they have that, um, multi-stop facility for all of the service, gets very crowded when there's a rush and a demand for service. Anyway, I think that, that when we're looking at this, we really need to see what, um, our constituent base needs based on where they are, and what the level of service is that they have now. And I think that in some areas we'll find that there's inadequate public space, uh, for staff to provide the services that our community might need where the population is growing rapidly.
Thank you. Chris?
I do. Logan, you want to go?
I was just going to say that I second what, uh, Councilman, the Council up there. You know, I, I was just over at the office last week, and, uh, it, it is a need to update, at the very least over there, um, based on the popularity coming here in Bluffton. Sorry about jumping on you there, Chris.
No, that, that's okay. And, and clearly, it did show that we need additional buildings and staffing there. So that, that is critical. No question about that. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say that I appreciate all of Council's comments that are going for me, and I appreciate the effort by administration and preach in putting this together. Um, it is a lot of information, so me personally, I need some time to digest this. I do have a little bit of scare shock at the moment. That's okay. I'll probably get over it. Um, but, you know, the one thing that really sticks out to me is kind of what York said about putting puzzle pieces together. I would really like to see us fit this into a coherent strategy for the county, where we're covering the financial needs, we're recovering the workforce needs, meaning the administrative needs, we're recovering the services that our population currently needs and will need in the future. But really turning that into a coherent strategy is what I suggest, you know, a one-off, this is what we need to do with justice facilities.
Yep. A good point. Um, Gerald, you're next. You're still on mute.
Yeah, I, I think the presentation was outstanding. Um, like, like Chris, I, I need some time to digest the information that we were just given. Um, clearly, we, we got some crucial decisions to make as far as, um, uh, buildings and space and, um, the whole gamut of things, but I, I think overall, if we, uh, if we give our administrator and his staff time to digest this as well, and give us, uh, some directions or some suggestions as to what they think, and then we can weigh in on that and then, um, make the ultimate decision as to whether we go with that or implement some other, some other ideas. But clearly, we have to, we have to prepare for the future. There's, I mean, it's nowhere around it.
Thank you. Uh, Mark, you're next, and then Paul.
Uh, yes, um, and not to make light of the situation, it's kind of like, uh, going to lunch and, uh, someone say, do you want a ham sandwich, a chicken sandwich, or do you want a roast beef sandwich? Because I think that any of those options, all three of those options we saw were actually options that I could live with. I think that, that would put us in a better situation than we are right now. But it always goes back to, um, the, uh, the, the, the conversation that Mr. Herbichon always says, which is, you know, where's the money coming from, and where are we getting the money to do it? So, um, I, again, I, I'm very impressed with what we saw. I think it's going to end up being a combination, um, of, of a couple of those that, that end up being put together and figuring out what's best from our, from our staff. So again, thank you for everyone that worked on that.
Now, I did say that they are going to plant money trees in each of those, um, buildings to pay for this. Paul, you're the last one.
We're going to need one just to tree, Joe.
That's a whole field.
Did you, did you recognize me, Joe?
Yep. I did.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Well, of course, we have three options, and, uh, each one takes a slightly different twist and turn. And I think we need to certainly give staff some direction on that one, A, B, or C. But if this is in fact a 30-year project, I mean, I don't know any projections that can go out that far, um, including this one. But, um, I think what we need to do is direct staff, once we've picked A, B, or C, to say, set aside X dollars in, in the budget on an ongoing, on a continuing basis, and say, okay, here are the, here, here's the, here's the project, and here are the components, and here are the priorities, and, uh, what can you do in year one? And then on into year two, three, and four, and just move forward with it piecemeal. Of course, we're going to have, as you know, we're going to have lots and lots of competing, um, demands for these funds, um, and, uh, that are probably arguably more critical than anything we're talking about here. So, uh, it's going to be difficult, but I do think we need to tell staff, we want you to, to set aside X number of dollars. I don't know how much we have left in our 8%. I can't see us doing a referendum on this. Um, some of you may see that differently. I think this is going to have to come out of GF, um, X number of dollars a year, then, and, and 8%. Does anybody know how much we have left on 8% right now?
I think that's a discussion that we'll have to have.
Yeah.
About, uh, the financing of this. Uh, the 30-year plan is for how we're going to need to utilize these staff lines, but it's not going to take 30 years to build this, because you, you'd never be able to do this. In 30 years, we're probably going to need something different. So it's going to be, what do we need now? What is the most pressing issue? Clearly, I heard three things. One, a plan for the campus in downtown city of Beaufort. And what do we want to do there? What do we want to put there? What fits best there? Second, we have auxiliary properties around Beaufort County. We have properties in Bluffton, we have properties in Hilton Head that serves the needs of those populations. They need to be expanded and renovated for the population that's being served there. And third, we have clear facilities, our public works, our EMS, and what do we do with those? So I think we're going to have to attack each and every one of those. I think we need to give direction to, to Eric and his staff. They've heard what we said, what we think we said, and what we think we want to do. It's for them now to come back and say, based upon what we heard from you, here's what we think you should do, here's what we think the priorities are, and here's how we think we can pay for this. Is that a fair summarization?
Yeah, I noticed that each one of the options includes the, uh, the property that used to be the Piggly Wiggly adjacent on the cross, uh, Rebo Road from that, from our campus. So, right now, that's sitting idle, and probably there will be, even though the market, the real estate market overall is very high, I can't imagine there'd be a better time to lock that down. Because if they, they put a, uh, Marriott over there or something, it's, it'll suddenly be unavailable to us forever. So I just, I, I think, I think that would be, should be a priority, considering that it's in all three options.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. Okay, so is, is that a fair assumption to ask administration now to come back to us with what they surmise, they heard today as a preparatory plan for us to digest? Everybody okay with that?
Sure, Joe, could I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, sometimes, should be, um, give the administration parameters right now that, uh, they should not touch or consider or give a lot of thoughts to when they do make recommendations. One of the parameters I have, um, I think, Joe, you kind of alluded to it earlier, about, uh, raising buildings. Uh, you know, um, I don't have a problem raising buildings if they're obsolete, but if they can be renovated, uh, I prefer moving in that direction. I think the public would prefer moving in that direction. Um, so to me, that would be a parameter that I would want to put on this. Um, recommendations that, um, we consider all the use of that building before we even think about raising it, just because of what perception it would give to the public.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of that idea.
I think they heard us loud and clear that way, that, um, it would be preferential if we could rehab a building to rehab it. Uh, you know, certain things like the detention center, that clearly they said, our current detention center does not fit the modern concept of how you want to deal with that particular type of population and the programs that they need. Um, so that's why they're going in that road. But, you know, as far as our current administration building, just tearing it down does not seem to be, uh, a reasonable way of doing things when you have, um, an urban site like we have. Those buildings and property are, they're precious commodities.
And you, and you all will consider a resolution Monday night that allows us to spend a lot of, uh, money on these existing facilities. So it would be my position, if we're going to do that, then we don't need to be removing them, so.
Right, right. So you've heard us loud and clear as to the kind of direction we'd like you and your staff to take, um, and come up with some conceptual plans, what you think, based upon what preach has presented to us today, uh, where you think we should go, uh, how long you think it might take, and how you think we're going to pay for this.
We can do that, and we'll have that for you. And you and I can talk about which committee this needs to go back before.
Uh, I'm sure.
One of our committees is very, very, very busy with all sorts of projects going on. So you and I will discuss whether or not it might need to go to the executive committee, uh, of, as we move this forward, so anyway.
Gotcha. Yeah. Now, um, if it's okay with, um, county officials, it's 4:10, we've been here a long time. There is one other opportunity. Brittany has prepared, um, results and recommendations on some county properties that you received today. It's an eight-page document. Um, that would be the final thing that I would consider doing today, if that is acceptable to everybody, and then we'll shut it down and have to come back with the, the rest of the items. That okay with everybody? Thumbs up? Okay, all right. Uh, then, Brittany, we would ask you to, um, do your presentation.
Thank you, and I'll make this as brief as possible. Um, I'm going to share my screen. And you all should have received a copy of this earlier today, as...
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, the PowerPoint's going to be used as a reference, um, for you to see visually be, um, provided, where these properties are located. I'm going to start in the northern area of the county, um, and move south towards Hilton Head. Uh, I want to preface this, that in assessing the properties, I did not look into any right-ofaways or easements that are being held by the county, so you're not going to see any of that here. I also limited the scope of the properties. There are some that have been purchased through rural critical, but any properties that have already previously been designated by Stephanie Najid or anybody else in the county staff as a property owned by rural critical program, that in fact already has a park on the property, or has, um, future plans for a park, and near future plans for a park on those properties. So those are kind of the two stipulations, I want to make sure. Um, I also have a list of DSN homes, um, that are in the county. Those are not on here either. Um, typically, DSN homes are purchased through grant funds that has stipulations on them, and I don't think it's in our best interest, um, to relieve us of those properties. So otherwise, um, I've narrowed down the scope to properties that I'll deem as potential or are surplus. And, uh, here we go. So, starting in the north is the Page Point area. There are four properties there. You're going to see them on the list that I provided in the summary. Uh, starting with the first one, which is 465 Page Point. This is a piece of vacant land. It was provided to us back, um, as a, um, exchange for paving the neighborhood road. The value was $7,900. Uh, so it's .9 acres. I have had an interested party, um, on this property, and we have also received an appraisal. Uh, next is going to be 743 Page Point, which is also the, um, 1C and, 1B and 1C. We're part of the same transaction. Um, well, counsel, then, there was a project that was going on. We needed an easement through another piece of property in exchange for providing a road access to a third property. We were given these two properties here. There is a deed restriction on one of the properties, which is 743, which provides the previous property owner the right to hunt on the property until we sell it at any future date. So that, um, that right to hunt will be extinguished once we, or decide to sell it. Um, so those properties in total are about 11 acres. They are separate, as you can see here. The last one is, uh, 1D, 616 Page Point. I've also had an interested party in this property as well. Um, we have not had an appraisal on it, but it is a piece of vacant land. Any questions on these four?
Did you say 743 was 200 acres? Or 100, I'm sorry, 100 acres?
No, sir, those are, that is about 11 acres. 11.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
Approximately.
And all of these are potentially available properties that somebody could purchase and do something with them, build something on them?
Yes, sir. At this time, um, in presenting this, and I probably should have started with this, I have gone through the county to different departments and asked whether or not these properties would be, um, suitable for any use that they would have. Um, so, and speaking with all the departments, nobody stepped up to say any of these properties would be of value to them, um, for use. Uh, these specifically are all vacant.
And currently, you said some of these have appraisals on them, but not all of them?
That is correct.
And, and therefore, we should get appraisals on all of them? Uh, obviously, with the current market, um, property is worth a lot of money. So this may be a, a very good time to dispose of properties that we don't need. Alice, go ahead.
Are any of these, um, near county water?
Um, you'll s-
Just one of them?
1A.
The only one, okay.
But that is in a neighbor, in a neighborhood. So it's all residential homes in that area, on that strip of, um, road.
Okay. Thank you?
Brittany, if I might ask?
Yes, sir.
Brittany, if I might ask, the, the property, um, which one was it? 1B, 11 acres?
That one is 9.42.
B is 1, 9, 9 acres?
Yes, sir.
Yep. So C is the 11 acres? 1C?
C is 3.77 acres.
That was-
Total of A, B, and C is 11 acres.
Okay, I got you, I got you. And, and none of the department head have any future, um, inside of, uh, use for any of that property?
I have not had any step up while we were going through this analysis. No, sir.
Okay.
Quickly, uh, any timber in that there? Any of it? Worth marketable?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, Najid would probably look into that if possible, but I'm not sure. Um, again, I mean, for nine acres, that might be feasible. The others are fairly small. So I would presume it'd be unlikely. Any others for these?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Next, we're going to move downtown to the city of Beaufort. We just had the analysis on the uses of the buildings. There is one piece of property, um, in speaking with Mark Rosenau. He pointed out to me, it is at the corner of 281 and Duke Street. Uh, it is currently, um, a vacant lot. It was purchased back in 1990. Um, uh, speaking with Mr. Rosenau, there is an individual that may be interested in purchasing it. Uh, it is a smaller piece of property, and- And as far as the conceptual plans of putting any, uh, county buildings on it, it is an acre. Um, but it is downtown, it has not been used. And to my understanding, Mark, Mr. Rosenau stated that there's not a use in the future for it.
I'm going to bring this up now. Um, all these are good ideas, but, um, I keep thinking about affordable housing and that'd be a great location for some affordable housing.
That's true.
Yeah, so, yeah, before we, before we decide to sell.
Oh, absolutely. And again, this is just bringing it to the forefront. And I think part of this whole analysis and the reason we're doing this is so that you can see what is out there. Because I, I believe that we kind of forget what we own sometimes.
Okay.
So this is surplus property. If you have an idea, uh, for it, I'm sure, not to speak on his behalf, but the ministry would love to hear ideas.
Yeah, and Councilmember Howard, we have not, you and I have talked about the discussion of potentially selling a piece of property in this area for affordable housing. Uh, this does not include that analysis, but in light, and that's why this discussion in conjunction with what we just heard about the facilities, uh, um, plan is very important. If you all want us to explore those options, then we're happy to do that, uh, given the proximity of this parcel to the other parcel that we had talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Moving a little bit more south to Ladies Island, Towneport Royal. Um, we will start with CLM Parkway, which is over near the airport. Um, this is a corner lot. Um, it is, it backs up to, um, a neighborhood. There have been discussions with Stormwater that it might be feasible to use it for the Stormwater Program. But again, this is informational purposes only and just letting you know that there is a vacant lot there. Um, I'm sure that, I'm unsure of the value on it. Um, and we are looking to see if possibly Stormwater or somebody in Public Works can use it. But it's there. Next is 1408 Paris Avenue. There is a building on it. Um, but at this point, I think it's occupied by the Beaufort County Council on Aging, um, which again, in our review of, uh, county buildings, might be feasible to move them and leave this property, um, available for sale. So. Any questions on those two?
And they do not pay rent at this time?
It's my understanding that there is no rent being paid on that property.
Okay, thanks.
But I cannot confirm that.
Okay.
Next is going to be the Shell Point area. Um, you can see it there on the map. So, uh, you're probably more familiar with 4A. It is on the corner. Um, this property was conveyed to us by the federal government. There are some stipulations on this piece of property, um, as far as use goes. Um, specifically, the property has to be used for some type of recreational use. Um, otherwise, it does have to be conveyed back and the profits have to be provided to the federal government. So there is a nuance there. Um, I know there has potentially been some interest maybe by some of the other municipalities on it. I'm not sure, but this could be a place for a project. And again, just letting you know, there's a vacant lot there that we own.
How many acres is that?
Um, that one is actually the deed that conveyed it over. It has not been surveyed since the 80s. Um, and even then, it was questionable which parcels this one actually encumbered because they conveyed over about nine different lots. Um, and there was easements and restrictions placed on each one of them, I think. And please Chuck, I think if I'm wrong, but it's about 15 to 16 page deed. Um, so to go through it, I have not dug into that. Um, so I can't answer you now, but I can let you know.
But it looks like, um, maybe what, four, five acres? Oh, yeah, that.
Yes, sir, just shot five acres.
I was going to say, if I was going to.
Just shot five.
If I was going to estimate, I believe Chuck and I came to a conclusion before it was around five, five to six, like that, so.
This one's been brought up by the Towneport Royal. Has it actually been annexed into the Towneport Royal or not?
Chuck, I don't believe it has, has it?
Because they have brought it up.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon. It has not been, uh, Ben Willis, I had a conversation with him some time ago. And the question was if it could be sold and brought into the town and developed as a commercial development. Uh, that's when we started digging and we found out that there are all kinds of deed restrictions. This was brought over at the same time as Burton Wells. There's actually a, uh, well repeating station that's on this. It was part of supplying water to, uh, Paris Island some, many years ago. Uh, so that was the conversation. I don't think it was for the use of the town. It was so that the town could bring it in development into, uh, something that produced taxes.
Yeah.
Does somebody have a question? I'm sorry.
Nope. Okay, continue.
All righty. So we're going to.
Can you go back to Palmetto Street? How did we get that one? That's a real odd one.
This was deed at our, we purchased this one from the Towneport Royal.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, like I said, right now it's being used as the Council for Aging, so.
No, the one in Palmetto Ridge Street?
Yes, ma'am.
In Shell Point?
I believe, no.
Okay. The one that you have is B in Shell Point. What, what is that one?
Um, I am not sure who we bought that one from. I do not have it on my records here, but I can get that answer.
That one surprised me because it's in the middle of the neighborhood.
I had that one mixed up with another one.
It's an odd, odd one, yeah.
And I will email those answers to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, moving down to Highway 170. We just recently discussed this one in the previous presentation. I did include the, where the sheriff is located, um, in the special ops buildings. Again, unsure of where they were going to be located if we are moving them. Uh, previous presentations said we shouldn't, so. But, uh, they're on here as 5A and 5B. Both are, one purchased in 2009, the other in 2013. Uh, I also included on here a little bit south of there, towards the water. You're going to see at the end of Camp St. Mary's, um, parcel 5C on this, 121 Camp St. Mary's. This property is purchased back in 1997 for $500,000. It's my understanding that this was purchased with general funds. Um, but it was intended to be, uh, put into possibly the Rural and Critical Program. Right now, it's part of the Parks and Rec Program potentially. So that is a property that's, for lack of a better term, being unused at the moment.
Brittany, is 5A and 5B are those and are the ones you and I discussed previously?
No, those are where the sheriff's, um, special ops are.
Okay, okay, I understand.
But 5C, um, below that, that's the eight acres, um, off of St. Mary's, I believe we had discussed before.
The reason, the reason we've included Camp St. Mary's is there's been some discussion about council doing something with that in the past. We are currently, uh, working to put in security gate and do some minor improvements to the property to secure it right now and to make it safe for the public, uh, putting up, uh, gate, fencing along a pier and putting in an automatic gate, uh, and working with Councilmember Fluele. And that is in his district. I think Brittany is going to discuss a potential option for you later on with a piece of property that Councilmember Cunningham might have an interest in for another project, uh, and a potential swap with Camp St. Mary's. So anyway, we'll, we'll get to that in a few moments.
Next is the Barrel Landing area. This is at the corner of 170 and 278. There are, um, several properties on this, um, associated with this purchase. It was all done through Rural and Critical. Um, you will see on this list, uh, that they range anywhere from 1.82 acres up to around 30, 30 plus. Um, right now, Stephanie Najid is in the process of having them rezoned if they haven't already been rezoned. Um, and to my understanding, she does have, um, some plans to put in, um, some type of passive park in there or at least some type of access for the public.
The, the, the key point to this and the reason why this is, uh, being discussed is, uh, as many of you may know, Solicitor Stone owns the property just up in the crook there where the kind of, um, beige area is. I don't know if anybody can point to that in that area right there. And he is looking to do an additional building in his complex. It may need some adjacent parking. And he and I have discussed the possibility of using one of these parcels for parking that could also, that in addition to helping him with his need for the additional building, he's going to build from a zoning standpoint. Uh, could also be a joint use parking lot for a passive park that we build there. Uh, so that's, that's why we're, uh, presenting this to you all. It's Rural and Critical lands, um, property right now. Uh, so we'd have to work that out some way, uh, potentially do a swap, uh, with one or more of those parcels with another piece of property somewhere else. But, uh, that's, uh, that's the reason why this has been presented to you.
So are you saying that this is a possible location for like ball fields along those lines?
No, it is.
Of the exit ramp of 278, correct? And 170?
Uh, it's, uh, it's not going to, it's not likely to be impacted by that because Barrel Landing is the frontage road that runs along the off-ramp stuff to 170 and 278. Uh, this would just be a passive park situation where we might build trails, uh, for people potentially bike riding or walking or things like that. No act of recreation would occur there since this is Rural and Critical, so.
So moving forward, um, on the opposite side of 278 from Barrel Landing is what our tax records show is known as this Island West Commercial. Um, staff internally refers to it as the Okati Regional Preserve. Um, so I've referenced both of them there. You'll see here, the, the county actually owns five parcels. Um, the middle parcel is solely wetlands. Um, so I have not included on this analysis. Specifically why I brought this board, um, is that 7C, you can see where Hampton Parkway, um, cuts through 7B, 7C and follows down to 7D. 7C is, um, specifically, I wanted to point this out, it is also eight acres. Um, it was purchased back in 2013, but it was also purchased with other property. So I don't want you to be confused on my summary here. It says that under 7C, that was purchased for 1.4 million. Again, that was multiple parcels within this same area that were purchased together at the same time. So I don't want anybody to think we purchased eight acres for the 1.4, um, for future conversations. But 7C, um, this is also, uh, right now currently zone commercial. Any questions about Island West area?
Brittany, that's located adjacent to Stokes Toyota, is that right? So this is, this is adjacent to Stokes Toyota, this parcel.
So you can see here, this would be the, um, car dealerships here or across the street here.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We're going to go back down Highway 170, um, as if you're going towards Pritchville or New Riverside. Here is, the first one we're going to talk about is this first star here, and then we'll go down further to Gibbet Road. So the first properties, 8A and 8B. Uh, they were both purchased back in 2016. Uh, the 8A was purchased for a million. It was 20.96 acres. And then what I want to make sure you guys see on this is that the funding sources were split between the Rural and Critical Program and the Stormwater Utilities. Um, so there was a, a split cost there.
Brittany, 8A has been cleared.
It is, yes, it's currently being timbered.
Yes, and, and is there a specific, um, use for that land that's going to be done because it has been entirely cleared?
That was part of, um, Stephanie Najid's, uh, timbering program?
No, that we're, we're building a regional Stormwater Fund on that property through the Stormwater Utility.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, so yes, the Stormwaters, I need 8A, timber was on 8B. My apologies. Any questions on those two?
So if it was bought with Rural and Critical, I, I know it's ex, and Stormwater money, it's kind of fit, it's kind of, the restrictions on it are going to be pretty tight, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yes.
We're, we're thinking about a couple of things here. Uh, potentially, this would be, one of these parcels would make a, uh, a portion of it would make a good, uh, location for the potential material recovery facility. Again, we'd have to do a swap with another piece of property somewhere uh, in sort of Beaufort County for Rural and Critical. In addition to that, I think Councilmember Cunningham, uh, has been working with a group, um, on some, uh, on some donations to build another facility. And this might be an appropriate location for that as well, so.
Yeah, I'll touch on that just a little to Eric without exactly seeing what it is just yet. Um, they're going to be giving a presentation. You have the next county council meeting on Monday or our first one in September. Um, when they have everything prepared for everybody else on council. Um, but I do think one of those locations might be, uh, a good central location between Hilton Head and Beaufort.
The next one we're going to look at is 270 Gibbet Road. Many of you will know this as the previous, um, convenience center that was out in Pritchville. This property, um, is actually zoned residential. It is currently a non-conforming use commercial, um, which would expire on January 1st. Um, it is approximately .6 acres and was purchased back in the 90s, or 80s, um, for approximately $1,500. So this is one of those that, uh, could be used as a storage of, of equipment. But at the same time, I think it could be also sold, um, as a surplus property. We are now going to move quickly down to Bluffton Parkway. Uh, to give you a reference, right here is 46 coming straight into the center of, um, downtown Bluff, or Bluffton. Uh, and over here is going to be Pine Crest. Buckwater is essentially on the very left side of your screen. 9A and 9B. Um, these two properties were part of the engineering department's, uh, planning of the Bluffton Parkway. That's how they were purchased. And they are currently both vacant. As you can see here, there are wetlands on the property. Um, but the, otherwise, there is no other use for the county for them. Obviously, there's going to be wetland mitigation costs that are going to be associated with it if we did sell it.
And Stormwater has no interest in them.
Not that Neil Desai has brought forward at this point, so.
Just ask him.
No, good question. Next is going to be 9C. 9C is directly next to the Tanger Outlets. Um, this is a piece of property, um, that is fairly large, it's almost 10 acres. Um, purchased back in 2015 for approximately $40,000.
And we, we believe, I believe of all the ones that we've talked about today, this one makes a lot of sense to do either to sell for affordable housing or to do a public-private partnership, uh, with someone, do affordable housing there given the proximity to, uh, employment and given the frontage to both 278 and the Bluffton Parkway.
That's too wet, though. It's too wet.
Have you purchased one for, Brittany?
$30,000.
Wow.
We would be able to mitigate it? Okay.
The last one that we're going to discuss today is 9D. This, uh, piece of property was part of a condemnation, uh, when putting in the Bluffton Parkway. Uh, I bring this one up because it is a half acre. It does a bid to a, um, apartment complex. And driving by the complex, you can see that, um, on the apartment side of this property, uh, it appears they use it for locations of the trash receptacles as well as some garages. So if you have a half acre sitting around, why not present it to you, right? And I did that one as quick as I could, so I think we got through them all.
Well, I, I think that's very good. You know, a, as you know, uh, the Soloco is going to presenting, um, at their next meeting, the final report regarding, um, a housing trust fund. I think it behooves us to talk about some of these properties as the ability for us to incorporate that in our future plans for workforce affordable housing wherever we can. Some of those lend themselves specifically to that premise.
Chairman, I, I'd like for you to call it the Regional Housing Trust Fund instead of.
Well, yes.
That's another part of the county or part of that, too. Just a minor point, but a major point.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay.
You're right, we need to look at this.
We'll do that later. Yeah, what, what we would recommend that we, uh, do is, uh, let you all, uh, we would present a list to you all that we would recommend to sell and that we would advertise these in the newspaper, the ones that you approved for us to sell. And let folks know that we're, uh, taking, uh, bids on property and, um, get those, um, get those bids in and then proceed on with you all for approving that and then moving those forward to closing.
We, we would set the minimum bid and they would be sealed bids, correct?
We could, um, my intention was to have appraisals done on them. Um, and then we have a certain amount of time for you. And then we have a certain amount of time, 45 days, for any and all offers to be made. Yes, I think a sealed, sealed bid situation would be appropriate. I can double check with Dave Thomas to make sure that that follows our procurement code. But in previous conversations with him, he thought that was an appropriate idea as well. So.
Yeah. And I, I would think that we would want a minimum bid for each of the properties.
Yeah, we, we can do that. We would also, when I say advertise it, I'm, I mean, put it out in various forms through social media, various media outlets, through our communication portal and all of that. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So it would be my suggestion at this point in time that we end today's meeting. We still have other things that we need to do. And that we set Thursday, the 26th at 2:30 PM for another special meeting to finalize what's on this agenda. And maybe by that time, you could at least have these properties that you want us to sell to talk about that. Obviously, you will not have the first part, the presentation from Creach, done at that point in time, but maybe this could be accomplished. Anybody have a problem with setting Thursday, the 26th at 2:30?
Well, I mean, I won't be here, but that doesn't, just, I know I'll be out of town in Michigan on that day.
Councilmember Dawson, do you have a meeting on that day? Is that, is that the day we scheduled one for you? I don't have that calendar in front of me. Is that for you and Jared?
I have a meeting that evening, but that won't be there. And you do, you do too, man.
Can you hear me, Brian?
Yes, sir.
I, I think I do have a meeting at 2 o'clock on the 26th.
Jared, Jared said you have one from 2 to 5, Councilmember Dawson.
I have one what?
2 to 5.
Yeah. Yeah.
Locog is 6:30 to 8 on that date also.
There's nothing on Tuesday, Chairman, so that might be an option. Tuesday, the 24th.
Tuesday, the 24th, we could do in the afternoon. Okay. Tuesday, the 24th, starting at 2?
I'll have to probably leave early, but that'll be, it'll be okay. I work that evening.
Okay, no problem. We, we shouldn't be as long as we are this time, Logan. Hopefully, no more than two hours. We can complete everything we want to do or less.
Yeah, I'm trying to set as much as possible. I don't know what you're talking about.
All right.
Noah, is that 2 or 2:30, will you?
2. 2 o'clock on the 24th.
Got you.
Okay. And we're set. No further action to be taken. We will adjourn this special meeting at 4:41. Thank you very much.